Indiana.
Crennan.
CPL 2019-32, an ordinance renaming Fund 445 to the City Building Renovation Fund, and establish 2019 budget for the renovation of the city buildings. Sponsored by Mayor Karen from the little sensitive Gary Angela Hayes City Controller.
Finance.
Mr. President, it is Simon opinion ordinance and resolutions.
Thank you.
President.
Councilwoman Brown.
Finance Committee has before it CPO 2019-26. For the record, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Mr. President, majority of the Finance Committee has approved CPO 2019-26 for reporting out to the council. Finance Committee has the board CPO 2019-28. For the record, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Mr. President, majority of the Finance Committee has approved CPO 2019-28 for reporting out to the council. Finance Committee has the board CPO 2019-29. For the record, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Mr. President, majority of the Finance Committee has approved CPO 2019-29 for reporting out to the council. Finance Committee has the board CPO 2019-32. For the record, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Mr. President, majority of the Finance Committee has approved CPO 2019-32 for reporting out to the council.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Smith.
The Planning Committee has before it CPO 2019-30. For the record, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. President, the Planning Committee has before it CPO 2019-31. For the record, I report out this record. This, I approve this ordinance for reporting out to the council. Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown.
The Finance Committee would like to report out CPO 2019-26, 28, 29, 31, and 32.
Dr. Williams.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
Planning Committee would like to report out CPO 2019-30 and 31.
The whoever brought the special select, we have two presentations that will take place. It's Mr. Hill here today. Mr. Hill. At this time, I have the mayor to come, her presentation at this time.
Mr. President, would you pass that? I don't see LaLoosa.
Okay.
Yeah. So she has everything.
Okay. All right. Before we go into special select, let me just say congratulations to all the candidates through the 2019 elections. Steve's in there, just want to wish congratulations. And to Mary Ledjaron Prince, want to wish him a congratulations. It's important that we all come together even before 2020 to make sure we have things in place to make sure our city goes stronger and go forward. And all the work we have the team to do at this time, we want to make sure those things don't go blank. And we want to just work together as a team there to make sure that all of Gary prosper and go forward. At this time, I will go with special select by any council member this time.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown.
I'm sorry, before we go to special and select, the city has received donations. So I need to, oh.
Yes.
Okay, the city has received the following donations for the Rainbow Shelter, $150 from the Fraternal Order of Eagles to be used for general operating expenses, and $65 from the New Era District Usters Department to be used for client bus passes or general operating expenses. My motion is that we accept these donations.
Second.
You're moving properly, second that we accept the donation that just been outlined by Councilwoman Brown. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proto.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Yes.
And President Bora.
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is eight to zero.
Vote are eight to zero. The donations has been accepted and so ordered. And also happy to see Councilman Proto here with us on today, too. We've been missing you, and we happy that you're having a speedy recovery. It's good to see you. Special and select by any council member at this time.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown.
On the Third District Community Organization, we're holding our regular community meeting on Monday, May 13th at 5:30 PM. And we are not positive at this moment who our guests are going to be because we have not received a confirmation as of yet. But certainly, we welcome everyone to attend our meetings. And so anyone who would like to come, please feel free to do so. So that meeting will be on Monday, May 13th at 5:30 PM at Toddleston Pavilion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Yes. Good evening, folks. I'm glad to be here. I was not successful in the primary for my reelection to this seat, but I will continue to serve throughout 2019. And I appreciate the support from everyone, and I do plan to continue to cooperate here. I've got an Art Culture and History Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, May 13th, and that is at City Hall in the Council Lounge. It'll be at 6:00 PM. Everyone is welcome. Again, that's Art Culture and History, May 13th at 6:00 PM. And we have a regularly scheduled First District Community meeting, which is normally the fourth Monday of each month, but that will be, that will be Memorial Day. So I will have to update you as to the date for that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for exercising their right to vote yesterday. It was exciting to see that we're going to have some young people in our council. It's going to be great to see how the city will look from their eyes. I'd like to thank all those that supported our council members. I want to thank all those who made it clear to us their concerns for our city, and the best way for us to move forward is together. We can't do it ourselves. We need organizations, we need block clubs, we need everyone to participate if we're going to make this city better. Thank you. God bless you.
Mr. President.
I'll go. I will.
The Fifth District will have our last class of our nutrition education program this Monday, May the 13th at 5:30 at Roosevelt Pavilion. Our special guest is Beth Noel. She's the Purdue Educational Program Coordinator, so please come out for the last class. Also, our five-by-five-by-five cleanup committee meeting will be Monday, May the 20th at 5:30 at the Roosevelt Pavilion. That's 2145 Harrison Street. The following week, we'll be preparing for our five-by-five cleanup, so please come out so we can discuss what areas need to be cleaned up. Also, boards and commissions will have our committee meeting for the redevelopment commission. All applicants who apply should be there. And this will be Tuesday, May the 14th at 6:00 PM in the Cleo Weston Lounge, Second Floor of City Hall. For any questions, please contact the council office, 219-881-1315. Thank you.
Councilman Proto.
Yes. Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate Cozy Weatherspoon, who will be taking over in January as the Second District Councilperson. I'd like to congratulate all the council persons who will be returning for 20, for 2020. Wow. One thing about life, you never know what your journey would be like. I never had a one-minute opportunity to get out and campaign this past year. One thing I learned about being in a hospital, it's like being in prison. I kept saying, why don't you all roll me to the front door so I could feel that sunshine? But for about 35 days. I want to offer my condolences to the Dunlap family in the past, and Master Dunlap's brother, Thomas Dunlap. And I want to acknowledge my elementary school teacher, Mrs. Smith, is here. Good to see you. As Coach Smith's wife. So I really had a lot I wanted to talk about, but right now it's an emotional high. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Smith.
First of all, I would like to thank all those that believed in me, supported me, and voted for me. I just want to say thank you. And then I would like to congratulate all my colleagues and Mr. Chlores Lay for a successful race for the Council at Large Seat. I wish you all well on your new journey, and I'll be around. I won't call WLTH. But I'll be around. If you need me, call me. I'm here. I'm still here to help. And I'll, until the end of my term, December 31st, I will do all of my power to continue to find ways to improve our opportunity, improve our quality of life. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Thank you. Just wanted to inform residents in the Fourth District that I am working on a couple of meetings that are coming up. Last year, I was able to meet, actually, we met here with the Little Calumet River Basin Commission regarding some issues in Marshletown. And certainly, I want to finish that up. And so we're going to be having a meeting the beginning of June. It has not been scheduled as of yet. And the other meeting I will be having is going to be at James Reed Park regarding vandalism. And so I'm very discouraged and upset. I'm working with the park superintendent, and so we're going to be having a meeting regarding that to kind of discuss what we can do as a community to, to better, to better be on the lookout for our parks in the community. It's a new park. It's a nature park. It's a park that is, that I'm very proud of, and very pleased that it was brought to me to have that park there. And so those are some things that I'm working on. At the next council meeting, I will be making, giving you those dates for both of those meetings. But just wanted to give you a heads up to the residents in the Fourth. Those are two things that are coming up this month, and the end of this month, and the beginning of next month. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Caldwell.
Mr. President, I would like to offer condolences to Herman Kendrick's family. He was a longtime member, business partner in the Fifth District. I would like to offer condolences. Also, I would like to thank the residents of the Fifth District for your support yesterday. Thank you for the next four years. Thank you.
Before the mayor come, also like to thank everyone for your support in the election on just yesterday. I don't take it for granted. I really appreciate it. Look forward to continue to serve you all in any capacity that I can, but making you proud that you have made a good choice on this council by electing me as your representative for one of your councilmen at large inside the city. But there were some things that we dealt with yesterday with the voting, for our people not knowing where to go, proper signage there. But that wasn't a kicker for me. The kicker was when a senior called me and said she wanted to work for me. And this wasn't just any ordinary senior. She didn't walk in here like a lot of us did. She got on the wheelchair, and she went across town, caught the bus, and she went to a polling site. And she worked pretty much half the day, and then she called me and said, Mr. Bora, I have to go to the restroom. I said, well, you had a facility where there's elevators. You can just go inside and use the elevator. She called me back, and she said, there, no one here to use the elevator. I can't get to the bathroom. So I said, well, there's a church on this block. If you can make it there, know someone's there. She went there. I know they have a working elevator. They told her this was not a polling site, and they refused to let her use the restroom. So this lady wound up using the restroom on herself because there was no facilities. Now, we talk about facilities being in gas stations and things of this nature, and we talked about being accessible to all. We just passed the ordinance on it. This is one instance where we have to make sure everyone has the same rights to all of us as we walk into these facilities. And, you know, we talked about being accessible to all, and we thought we were doing all we can, but evidently, we're not. Because we see incidents like this where someone that doesn't have the luxury to walk upstairs or go downstairs like we do. We do. And a bad situation like this where she was so proud to serve for me on the election and that this situation hit the curve. I want to make sure no one never has to go through this again, and want to make sure that we work with the election board, wherever these polling places are at, that we make sure they are accessible to everyone that needs to use them. And so I want to make sure at the next election that any place that does not have someone to make sure that they're there to, you need someone to man these elevators, that someone's there. Our churches should be a place, if someone's there, where you're welcome to come into, not turning people away. And so I want to work through that because I'm not going to call any names today because I know who these places are, but I'm going to have it addressed. Personally, I'm going to have it addressed. Because no one should have to suffer any embarrassment of that nature there when they're just trying to help and do their civic duties. So I appreciate everything that people try to do, but we want to make sure everyone has the same rights that we all do.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I choose, I just neglected to extend my sincerest appreciation to residents of the Third District, who I'd like to meet again to be their representative. I had some major concerns, too, though, as it related to the location for polling places. There were so many people who had no idea where the polling place was. I had so many people who called me and said, I don't, I have no idea. I mean, it just so happens there is an app on the phone that you can pull up and find out where the polling place is. But those people, a lot, and there are many seniors in my district who don't have an iPhone and do not have the ability to do that. I mean, thank God I was able to do that for some of them. But we have got to do a better job in terms of informing residents where their polling place is. People want to vote. And I had someone tell me yesterday, this is the third polling place I've been to. Now, if I go in there now and they tell me I can't vote, I'm going home. Can't blame them. I mean, this was a senior who had gone to three places to try and vote. So they have got to do a better job informing people where their polling places are. And, I mean, I'm willing to do what I can do to inform residents in the Third District, but there's got to be some things that are done in the county as it relates to informing people where their polling places are. So I, you know, once again, I thank all the residents of the Third District who were kind enough to vote for me to continue to serve as their representative. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown.
To add to what Councilwoman Brown said, I have to totally agree. One of the concerns that I have is the state combining these precincts like this and stacking people on top of each other. I think as a council, we need to go to the election board and talk to them and explain to them our concerns because we're probably the most highest voting city in the county percentage-wise. And I think that one of the problems is if we don't educate our community ourselves to let them know where they need to be, that's going to be a problem. I don't think we can necessarily rely on the election board. I think we need to get the information, and we need to take it from that standpoint and push it forward ourselves. Because obviously, from a timing standpoint, the information went out late. I don't think that the facilities were properly notified. I don't think that there was proper posting, and it brought about frustration, which equals voter suppression. And there's no way that we can continue to let that happen. I think one of the things that we probably need to do as a board is to challenge them and make sure that when that information gets out, that we educate our voters and let them know where they need to be at. Because it's still our responsibility to serve our community and notify it ourselves because we can't always let someone else do our work, and I think that's something we need to do. And again, I want to thank the mayor for her hard work, for helping us with the slate that she put together, the things she's done over the years. Cannot thank her enough for her hard work. We certainly would have loved to have kept her as our mayor. I personally say that. I will congratulate Sesser. We will work with him because that's what we're elected to do. And I thank everyone for being kind enough to vote for me, as well as all of our council members. And certainly, as I said on the radio this morning, Councilman Smith, and Councilman Proto, and Councilwoman Wyatt, that'll be missed as council people. I've only been here about six months, but I've worked with you guys. But I'm a resident here in the city. I'm concerned by our city, and we have to move forward together. And the only way we can do that is work. And I think this is one of the things that we need to address to make absolutely, positively sure, one, people know where to go to vote, and two, those locations have ADA compliant facilities, period. Now, the election board generally does the inspections. If necessary, maybe, you know, we need to go beyond that to protect our interests and our community and make absolutely sure that someone from City Hall that works for us follows up to make sure those things are in compliance. Because we're not going to have a lot of voting facilities because as times have changed, a lot of people, two things, one, vote early, as you see, and two, some people, you know, don't have the ADA compliant buildings. And if they haven't, we need to use them. The county does not pay an enormous amount of money for the usage of the building. We are aware of that. But there's got to be something that we, as a council, are, would ask us to do, Mr. President, to make it possible for us to inform our people. I think that's very important. Thank you very much.
Before we go any further, let me recognize a trustee that's here, former Councilwoman Kimmy Robinson, and our newly elected Councilman-elect of the First District, William Gottwyn, also here. At this time, our mayor will come. Ty Atkins. Ms. Ty Atkins is back there? Oh, yeah. Our newly-elect, Fourth District Councilwoman Ty Atkins, also. Good to see you all. Good evening.
Today, we are going to present the Gary Legends Award. And the first honoree is someone who's certainly not a stranger to any of us. He is a lifelong, lifelong Gary resident, graduated from Theodore Roosevelt High School in 1952, and earned ten, I repeat, ten, varsity lessons while participating in football, basketball, and track. Being an exceptional athlete in high school, he was a back-to-back champion in broad jump, breaking a 20-year record. And I believe that was a state champion. He was selected to be on an All-American High School track and field team and the recipient of a full scholarship, athletic scholarship to the University of Iowa. This honoree had a promising future ahead. During his college reign, he became a Big Ten indoor/outdoor champion, receiving All-Big Ten and Midwest honors, and an All-American honorable. After graduating from the University of Iowa, he turned to Gary and became a teacher, coach, and administrator at both the school and the district level. The man I am speaking about, and I'm sure most of you have guessed by now, is Coach Earl Smith Jr. He spent 56 years with the Gary Community School Corporation and began his teaching career in 1957 as a teacher at Bannaford Elmond School. From '62 to '67, he was a teacher and assistant football coach at Toddleston. From '66 to '69, he was the head basketball coach and assistant football coach at Frable. From '69 to '70, he was the Gary Westside Head Golf Coach. From '70 to '80, he was the Gary Emerson Head Basketball Coach. And in 1975, the team reached the Lafayette Semi-State Championships. From '77 to '78, the team won their first Hall of Fame game and attained the number-one ranking in the state. From '80 to '94, Coach Smith was the head basketball coach at Gary New Wallace. In '83 and '86, his teams reached the Lafayette Semi-State. And from 1998 to 2013, he served as the Gary Citywide Athletic Director. His basketball teams won 323 games over 26 seasons, including five conference titles, three regional titles, and two trips to the state tournament tournaments in 2018. Most recently, he was inducted, well, he was inducted in 2007 into the Football Indiana High School Football Hall of Fame and retired from the school administration. Currently serves as the president of the Gary Indiana Sports Hall of Fame. Coach Smith is married to the local Burris Smith and are the parents of two children, Sharita, the third, and big brother to the former State Senator, Billie Rogers. With great pleasure, it is an honor to present the Gary Legends Award to Coach Earl Smith.
Don't think you left on with my age, because I can't turn eighty-five. Think about being blessed. I've been blessed, no question about that. It's been a lot of joy in my life, and I know that God has been responsible for it because that's His intent that we should enjoy life. Those 56 years I spent, and matter of fact, Ms. Rogers down there was at Emerson during the time we were teaching. Also, I've known Coach Proto for a long time. So it's been very rewarding because of the young people that I've had a chance to work with down through the years. As I said before, I, my daughters are outstanding out there at Gary Frable, and I've been in the system my whole life. And I'm going to share this story with you. I was flirting with the coach of our high school basketball All-Americans, and they had a southern footer by the name of Wallace Grant that played for me a few years ago. And usually, when you got those outstanding players, they're looking there. I turned down a bunch of jobs at University of San Francisco, University of Kentucky, University of Alabama, because everybody was in the suit with just great ballplayers. But you know what? My wife and I were in San Francisco, and I just signed a contract to take a job here. And I said to myself, you know what? That's not going to drive me much to be here. So I turned all the way down to Columbia to stay in my hometown. Because a lot of teams you have that have wearability to head jobs other places, but because of something magnetic about the city, I was able to come back. So I'm just thankful for my family.
So I'm just thankful for my family. We had 52 years, I guess, I'm right. And I said, I'm appreciative of this waiting right here, and now I'm in the U.S., it's been very rewarding. This is my hometown, Lord Ray's in Gary, I have no intentions of leaving, so thank you.
We're presenting our next honoree posthumously, and his family was scheduled to be here, and they did not make it. Our next honoree was a remarkable man and a pillar in our community. He was born in Lorraine, Ohio, spending most of his time in Jackson, Mississippi. This academic fellow graduated high school at the age of 15, and attended Tugalo College, where he graduated in 1950. Realizing that he wanted to be a healer, he applied to the Gary Medical College and graduated in 1955. In 1958, he completed his internship at Madigan Army Hospital, and his residency at Ireland Army Hospital at Fort Knox, Kentucky, where he was a general medical officer. In 1960, this man left the military and settled in Gary, Indiana, where he launched his family medical practice. Dr. David J. Ross Jr. was double-award certified in family medicine and emergency medicine. By 1973, he had become the medical director of Drug Dependents, Inc., and the director of emergency services at Gary Methodist Hospital. During this time, there wasn't an ambulance in Gary, so he started the Emergency Medical Technician and Paramedic Course, which continues to this day. Having a passion for teaching with doctors and foreign-trained doctors in 1980, Dr. Ross became the director of the Methodist Hospital Family Practice Residency Program. As a prominent community leader and thinker, Dr. Ross was in demand for many other leadership positions outside of medicine, yet he remained humble through it all. He served on the Gary Police Department Civil Service Commission, Gary Board Health, and the Advisory Committee for Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Indiana. As a member of the Indiana State Medical License and Award, he was in a position to ensure that minority physicians receive fair treatment. And in 1993, he became the first African-American member of the Indiana State Gaming Commission, appointed by then-Governor Edom By. Being a well-known community philanthropist, the emergency room and library at Methodist Hospitals, North Lake Campus, are named in honor, Dr. David Ross. He also served as the president of the National Medical Association of Northwest Indiana, the Lake County Medical Society, Gary Ranch, and president of the medical staff at the Methodist Hospital in North Lake, as well as the vice president of the Lake County Medical Society. Please give a hand to the life and legacy of Dr. David J. Ross. We will make sure that his family gets this honor. Steel City Biddy Basketball Team or Organization finished their season and honored the players in a banquet. And I was unable to attend that banquet due to Sky's tighter getting, it was actually a week ago Sunday. But at that banquet, it was my intention to honor, to certainly congratulate the players, but also to honor those adults, those coaches, who have been with Steel City Biddy Basketball for a significant amount of time. So we'd like to do that tonight, starting with Coach Reginald Adams, who served 20-plus years with Steel City Biddy Basketball, and he is a co-founder. Coach Adams? Coach Terrell Johnson is away, but Coach Terrell Johnson served 20-plus years with Biddy Basketball, and 10 years in co-founding of the Steel City Biddy Basketball. Coach Terrell Johnson. Coach Johnson is the concessions manager, after serving 10 years with Steel City Biddy Basketball. Coach Johnson here. And Perry Jackson has been a referee for 30-plus years with Biddy Basketball, and nine years with Steel City Biddy. So please join us in giving all of them a round of applause. We do have a special honor to give to them, so that they will also be acknowledged. Thank you, Mr. President.
I also ask if you all can keep my family in prayer. During this campaign, well, we was at, what's that, 3280?
3280 Pierce.
3280 Pierce. Okay. 3280 Pierce. We was down there campaigning and playing bingo, and afterwards, we went to go up and check on some people that I noticed was in the building that didn't come down. And my uncle stayed in the building, and we found out he was deceased at the same time, and said, so I ask that you all continue to pray for my family. That's my father's twin brother. So that was a hard one for us to have to deal with there. During election season, a lot of times, I guess we make it look pretty easy, what we do, and I said it just the other day, when we was all together, it's not as easy a campaign as running for office when you are the elected official. And I just want to say, to the mayor, we appreciate all that you have done, all you continue to do for this city.
Yes.
I said it, and I know you had to leave, because you was going to cater to someone else, a member of the church that was 103 years old that passed away, and you was going to the service for the Yiddish breakfast at Pastor Munsey Church. And in my remarks there, I spoke about, you know, a lot of times, people use slogans when they run campaigns, and a lot of times, we speak action to those slogans, or sometimes we don't, because they're just catchy phrases. But the mayor used a slogan, caring about Gary. And I referenced you in two instances when we had some rumors there, and I got a chance to see how much you really cared about the city. I believe the first time I talked about was when we had the fire. We brought a new chief in, and we had some discrepancy going on back and forth. And after the meeting, you wanted to have a conversation with me in the back. I won't go into detail what we talked about, but she wanted to have a conversation. And you talked, but I heard the passion in your voice, and your voice went up and it cracked. You didn't cry, but your voice cracked, but I saw that you were concerned about the citizens and the safety of the citizens inside this community. I referenced that point, and I also referenced another point, and we have had several fires in our city, and where we had to evacuate entire buildings. And you looked at me, and you, and the Red Cross was there, and you said, no one was going to a shelter. We said, as long as I'm mayor, everyone will have a bed, and it will be in a hotel. Each instance, I have been there with you, I watched you make sure that they was fed, watched, made sure that they had proper clothing, if they needed, and shelter. The last one was at Dalton, about 10 o'clock, the fire started early in the morning, when everyone was in church. But about 10 o'clock that night, you made sure everyone was in a hotel bed. And I believe you went to one hotel to check people in, and it was going to the last hotel to check in. So a lot of times, people don't know the passion that you have, because these things are not down in front of camera. So I just want to personally say, as the president of the council, I have enjoyed working with you, and I have enjoyed just watching the passion that you have for the citizens of Gary. You made those shoes pretty good to fill. God bless you, Mayor.
At this time, councilman's ordinance and resolution on third and final.
CPO 2019-14, An Ordnance Amendment Title 15 and Title 9, Use Chapter 123 and Title Zone Code of Code ordinances of the City of Gary, Indiana. Petition Mary Hubbard Bobo, 7734 Ida Avenue, Hovin, Indiana, property at 3921 Tennessee Street, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Smith.
I move the passage of CPO 2018-14.
Second. The moment property's second. Over you at this time.
Mr. President, because of the distance, if it's okay with you, I'm going. Okay. Ms. Hubbard Bobo is petitioning for a special use permit to open a licensed daycare home in 3921 Tennessee Street. She currently operates a daycare in Hammond. This will be her first in Gary. The home passed inspections by the Gary Fire and Building Departments, and Ms. Hubbard Bobo passed a police background check. The BZA voted to approve this petition at their meeting on March 12, 2019. Sixty-four notices were mailed to neighbors within 400 feet of the property. Twenty-two were undeliverable, zero were in favor, and zero were opposed.
Any questions, councilmembers? Tonight is set aside for public hearing. Anyone wants to speak for, against, CPO 2019-14? You have three minutes to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, public portion is closed. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Protho?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
Vote are eight to zero. CPO 2019-14 passed on, third and final, in so order.
CPO 2019-15, An Ordinance Revising the 2019 Appropriations for Immunization Grant Fund 240 for the fiscal year beginning January the first, 2019, ending December 31st, 2019. Sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller.
Mr. President, I move the passage of CPO 2019-15 on third and final reading.
Second.
Moment property's second. Over you at this time.
Mr. Chairman, the Gary Health, Department of Health is funded in the area of immunization through a partnership with the Indiana State Board of Health. We're requesting that this ordinance modify the current Fund 24708 immunization budget. The increased amount is $40,583 for the period of January 1st through December 31st, 2019. And these funds have been previously approved by the State Department of Health for professional services, contract staff, travel, supplies, and reimbursement of expenses to the city for the 101, 200 med tech position.
Any questions, councilmembers?
Mr. Chairman.
No questions, but I believe we had this at March 23rd committee hearing. It was taken care of. Just so the public can be aware about why we're voting yes on this ordinance and these other ordinances, because we had committee hearings, so the public can be aware. And we, in those committee hearings, we were satisfied with the information that was put in front of us.
Okay. Thank you. None set aside for public hearing. Anyone wants to speak for, against, CPO 2019-15? You have three minutes to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, public portion is now closed. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Protho?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
Vote are eight to zero. CPO 2019-15 has passed on third and final, in so order.
CPO 2019-18, An Ordinance Appropriating 2019 Budgets for Operating Expenses of Gran and Special Revenue Funds for Gary Police Department of the City of Gary, beginning January the first, 2019, ending December 30th, I'm sorry, September 30th, 2019. Sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller.
Mr. President, I move the passage of CPO 2019-18 on third and final reading.
Second.
Moment property's second. Over you at this time.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is an ordinance that appropriates special revenue from the JAG program, which is a program through the federal government, the Department of Justice, and it's the Justice Assistance Grant. It is actually administered for Lake County through the Lake County Sheriff's Department. We all work together. There are a number of entities that work with the county, and each is apportioned a certain amount. The amount apportioned to the City of Gary will be used for police equipment, and excluding firearms and ammunition, it will include safety vests and computers, or can include safety vests and computers. And this is a yearly allotment for the use of the Gary Police Department.
Any questions, councilmembers? Tonight is set aside for public hearing. Anyone wants to speak for, against, CPO 2019-18? You have three minutes to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, public portion is now closed. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Protho?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
The vote are eight to zero. CPO 2019-18 has passed on third and final, in so order.
CPO 2019-19, An Ordinance Establishment of New Fund and Budget to Administer Lake, Michigan Coastal Grant Funds, sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman-Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller.
Mr. President, I move the passage of CPO 2019-19 on third and final reading.
Second.
Moment property's second. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, this is a, this establishes a fund and budget to administer the Lake, Michigan Coastal Grant Funds, which we receive through our Gary Stormwater District. As a part of our responsibility to manage stormwater and protect Lake Michigan and our watersheds, the City of Gary has constructed and/or will install several green infrastructure projects. We actually have two in the Atona neighborhood, on public-owned property. Some of these will be installed on vacant lots, and with the expansion, vacant lots that have been established as a result of demolition or deconstruction. With the expansion of the Gary Green Link Trail and the development of the Buchanan Street Green Gateway, the City of Gary will offer green infrastructure maintenance training sessions to include the purpose and benefits of green stormwater infrastructures. With this grant, the IDNR Lake, Michigan Coastal Program, Green Urbanism and Environmental Affairs, will host and facilitate six-to-eight workshop series, six-to-eight workshops, introducing city, groundskeeping staff, local businesses, and residents to green infrastructure and stormwater best management practices. The workshops will include topics such as green infrastructure installation and maintenance, native and invasive plant identification, integrated vegetation and pest management, stormwater pollution prevention, and landscape design techniques. Throughout these workshops, participants will learn the importance of protecting our watersheds, the benefits of green infrastructure, and the ways they can integrate and maintain green infrastructure in public spaces and neighborhoods under the city's environmental initiatives. One of the things I would add, Mr. President, is that when we recently- One of the things I would add, Mr. President, is that when we recently demolished the houses where the victims of Darren Van and Diamond Lewis were found, we intentionally set aside some of these dollars for the installation of green infrastructure projects that would be planned in conjunction with those families. So this is a part of the intent for this project.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any question, councilmembers? It's not a set aside for public.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just want to say that this is great legislation. That's something that I had always felt and talked about, was getting rid of these homes where the victims were found, and to be able to demolish them and come up with a program like this for those victims is excellent. So, thank you, Mayor, for this.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Any other councilmembers? It's not a set aside for public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak for against CPO twenty nineteen eighteen. You have three minutes to speak on this ordinance. Same now. Public portion is now closed. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proth.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Yes.
And President Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
We're eight to zero. CPO twenty nineteen nineteen has passed on third and final in so order.
CPO two thousand and nineteen dash twenty, an ordinance establishing a new fund and budget to administer Lake Michigan Postal Grant Fund, sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman, oh, I'm sorry, one, yeah. CPO two thousand and nineteen dash twenty, an ordinance transferring casino funds to the Park Fund, two fifty for seasonal workers, sponsored by Mayor Karen Freeman Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller.
Mr. President, I move the passage of CPO two thousand nineteen twenty on third and final reading.
Second.
The motion is probably second, that Councilwoman Caldwell. Over you at this time.
Um, Mr. President and members of the council, this ordinance allows the Park Department to hire seasonal workers. They will pay those workers eleven dollars per hour, which is consistent with the seasonal workers that are hired through general services. It also allows them to create the time work from seventeen weeks to twenty-six weeks. This is essential to the establishment or to the success of the Love Your Block program that has been going on since April first, and the Park Department is an integral part of that.
Any questions, councilmembers?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I have one question regarding, um, the, the work that the seasonal workers will be doing. I just want to clarify that these workers will be, in addition to the Love My Block, that they will be tending to much needed concerns in our parks in the city.
Yes, that's a part of, actually, the Love My Block plan.
Okay.
Working in the parks is a part of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other councilmembers? At this time, public portion is now open. Anyone who wants to speak for against CPO twenty nineteen twenty. You have three minutes to speak on this ordinance.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, my name is Jim Nowacki. I live in the second district, and thanks a lot for nothing. We see a budget here for the parks for over two million dollars. The personnel has three, three, three members, three staff who work in maintenance for the fifty-two parks we have around the city. Come summertime, not only do we, we suggest that eight additional seasonal workers for ten dollars an hour is going to be sufficient to maintain our parks, but now we're also going to say they have to maintain these other phony projects that the mayor was, that the mayor puts together. We just passed an ordinance for this crazy, uh, this crazy lakefront, what do you call it? The, uh, the St. Michigan, uh, Lake Michigan, uh, coastal project with grant money to throw these crazy projects around the city, leaving our major assets. You know, most cities consider their parks important assets, not just simply because they, they want to avoid them becoming lighted, but because in most communities, parks are amenities. But if you look at the parks in our city, you can see the, uh, the distressed condition, the lack of maintenance, trees fall that fell over, grass uncut, uh, buildings with collapsed roofs, the entire nine yards, and here you're talking about hiring less than a dozen, a part, a part-time, low-paid, uh, workers for the summer. Do you want to know why the parks look the way they do? It's because you don't have enough workers all year round, and you don't have enough workers during the summer when there's enough, uh, when there's so much work to be done. I have to tell the council that if you want to see some improvements in the city, you have to look at some basics. One of the basics we have is the investment we put in our parks. We don't ask for a lot. We ask that the grass be cut. We ask when a tree falls that it be cut and removed. We ask that when a World War II monument is destroyed to vandalism, that we make some effort to repair it. And not only the World War II monuments, but other monuments in the city, too. So, council, you entirely missed the message that was given to you in the last election. People want to see basics being taken care of in our city. They don't want the, uh, the ten workers where probably.
Mr. Nowacki.
Ten workers is required. Thank you.
Public portion is now closed. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proth.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Yes.
And President Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
We're eight to zero. CPO twenty nineteen twenty passed on third and final in so order.
CPO two thousand and nineteen dash twenty-one, an ordinance limiting Title Fifteen and Title Land Usage, Chapter One Twenty-three and Title Zoning Code of the Code of Ordinances of City of Gary, Indiana, petitioner MVAH Partners, ninety-one hundred Center Point Drive, Suite Two Ten, West Chester, Ohio, property at seven oh one to fifteen Broadway, Gary, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilor Smith.
I move the passage of CPO twenty nineteen twenty-one on third and final reading.
Second.
The motion is probably second. Over you at this time.
Mr. President, um, this project by MVAH Partners is being done at seven oh one to fifteen Broadway. It's also called the Broadway Lofts, and what this will allow us to do is to allow residential units on the first floor of a mixed-use residential commercial development. The first floor will have a WIC clinic and ADA accessible units. The clinic will face Broadway, and the residential units will be rear-facing. The BZA voted to approve this petition at their meeting on April ninth, twenty nineteen. Twenty notices were mailed to neighbors within four hundred feet of the property. Two were undeliverable, zero were in favor, zero were opposed.
Any questions, councilmembers?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Madam Mayor, is this the property where Memorial Auditorium remains? There are?
It is. Yes, it is.
And was, um, was notice given to, um, the Gary Historic Preservation Commission about, um, about this project?
No, ma'am. No notice was required.
As, um, a courtesy to the commission, I would ask that in the future, when there are, um, structures of historic importance, that the, um, Gary Historic Preservation Commission at least get notice of potential demolition, just as a professional courtesy to the commission and the commissioners who, uh, use their time, professionalism, and volunteer to sit on that commission.
You can certainly do that. You should be aware, and you probably are already aware, that this is no longer deemed a historic building by the state of Indiana. In fact, it was decommissioned, um, a few years back.
That, um, that may be true. My, my concern is that it has, um, historical value to the City of Gary, and while the state may no longer designate it as such, I think that it would be prudent to at least notify the Historic Preservation Commission so that they could weigh in on this. Thank you.
Any other question, councilmembers?
I would just have one question for Councilwoman Wyatt. Councilwoman Wyatt, by, by you sitting on the committee, can you provide us with something for our, as that commission? What do you all see with these buildings there? What do you all envision with these buildings?
Well, uh.
Because, I'm just.
Right.
Because these buildings have been sitting here for years, and that one there, I was hoping it would have got torn all the way down under the King administration and with a lot of other citizens also, but that, you know.
Yeah. So, um, the commission is, one of the, well, the primary focus for the commission, and we do have one of the commissioners here, and she could speak, um, better onto that at the public comment, but one of the, um, major focuses is to designate certain structures as Gary landmarks. Now, we, and, but there's a process for doing that, and so they have started with the, um, Gary Land Company Building, and once that's designated by the commission as a Gary landmark, then it's recommended, uh, to be so designated and approved by the city council. Now, the Memorial Auditorium was not, is not one of the, um, structures that was on their initial list to, um, to have designated as a Gary landmark. My point was simply that as a matter of professional courtesy to these volunteers who sit on this commission, that they at least get notice about this so that they can, if they have a case to make, that they can make it, and that was not done in this case.
Mr. President.
I don't have a problem providing notice. Um, I just want to reiterate to Councilwoman Wyatt and the public that this is an advisory group without any authority, and appointed by me, I might add. So, I just, I don't have a problem. I think it makes sense. It allows for the public discourse, but we need to be clear on where the authority in terms of approving, disproving those types of buildings, and, um, this was fully discussed before the Redevelopment Commission, and I would just remind, um, the councilwoman that the council has two appointees to that body.
Thank you. All right. Public portion is now open. Anyone who wants to speak for against CPO twenty nineteen twenty-one. You have three minutes to speak on this ordinance.
My name is Patricia Brown, and I serve on the Gary Preservation Commission. I'm one of your eight commissioners, and we are trying to bring an ordinance about in order to interact and, and, uh, stop this demolition from taking place. That's called eminent domain, and our commission is in their authority as to what they're doing, and memorial auditorium means a lot to the citizens of Gary, Indiana. And as I spoke with the citizens, spoke with the alumni, spoke with the people that served, that have played major league, major games there, attend wonderful graduations there, memorial auditorium, if it's only one thing left, which we don't want one thing left. We have a facade there, and we'd like to see it taken and made into some type of memorial for the citizens of Gary, Indiana. We don't want to see a structure replacing something that we have an endearment in our hearts and for the citizens. So I'm speaking out not only for the commissioners, which are eight of us sitting there. We met at three o'clock this afternoon, and we did, and one of our motions that was passed, we have four endangered structures sitting in Gary, Indiana. The Memorial Auditorium was one of them. St. John's Hospital was another one. Another one was built by William Wilson Cook, an architect back in nineteen twenty-one. He also put St. John's Hospital on the map for us, the only black hospital in Gary, Indiana, that served people of all colors. Is my time up? Can I go? That served people of all colors. Yes, it might have been something that was decided upon, but when it came across the commissioners' table, it's taken a little while for us to learn our jobs, and it's taken a little while for us to learn how to do what we have the right to do. So that's why I'm here this evening. I do serve as the chairman of that committee, and I'm letting you hear my voice. Please do not let this pass because we, as citizens, I'm speaking as a citizen and as a chairman sitting on that commission, that we need to keep Gary's history intact. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, my name is Jim Nowacki. I live in the second district. That, this is the Memorial Auditorium. It is memorial to the World War One, uh, men and women who sacrificed their lives in World War One, serving their country. It's also memorial to Billy Rube, Gary's first hero. He died in nineteen fourteen when he sacrificed his life to save a fourteen-year-old girl who was seriously injured in an auto accident. Both of those memorials are there. That's not what this ordinance is about. This ordinance is about changing the zoning requirements for that building to allow first-floor residents. And you've got a good example right across the street here of residents on the first floor. You see all the, all the windows with the curtains flying out of them. You see, you can hear everything going, as you're walking by, you can hear everything going on in those units. It's very, very undesirable units on the first floor. Now, Mr. President and, and, and the mayor and her overview said, oh, this is for the, because they have to have these handicapped, handicapped accessible units on the first floor. This is an elevator building, and right here on the first page, if any of the council people had any interest in reading the ordinance, you'd have read that the reason for the request appearance is limited market for commercial use. That's broader. That used to be the most successful commercial district between Chicago and Indianapolis, and it still could be if you didn't destroy it with the uses that you put on it. Churches in some of the buildings, uh, limit, uh, residential on the first floor in some buildings. No, it's the reason the city looks like this is not because of some natural disaster or calamity. It's because you, this council with the responsibility to make sure the city develops in a certain way, you wanted to develop in a certain way, the wrong way, and that's why the city looks like this. Not because of, of, of exterior, uh, forces on the city, but it's because the choices that this council makes and the previous councils makes, and, and we keep making excuses for that. Oh, we weren't on the council then. But you're on the council now. You're making a mistake now. And then twenty years from now, we'll say, oh, the council people say, we weren't on the council then. But you're making a mistake now. Broadway can be a commercial district, but who owns all of Broadway? Who owns all of it except for a unit or two that we'll hear from later? The City of Gary. If you guys want Broadway to look like something else, you could do it, but not this way. This is going to be a disaster. Thank you.
My name is John Allen. I'm a citizen. I live in the fifth district. I have business on. I support the ordinance. Uh, when we go to the grave, three things go with us: our wealth, our family, and our deeds. Your family go on, your ex-wife may marry someone else, your wealth is distributed to your kids, and your deeds live on, and they lay in their grave with you. When people visit, they follow the people you touch. We love the people that the auditorium was dedicated to, but they're gone, and we live, and we have to progress in our living, and so I support the ordinance in anything that's progressive in the development of that lot. Thank you.
Same now and all. Public portion is now closed. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Sorry about that.
Evening, council. Thanks for your time tonight. Pete Quigler, I'm with MBH Partners. We are the developers for the proposed mixed-use building. We certainly were excited when we were able to receive funding for this development through the state of Indiana to the great mixed-use project and provide 38 brand-new, high-quality, yet affordable units to residents in your community in order to bring commercial life to back to downtown, to bring people back to downtown. And this is the start of what can be beginning of the rebirth of downtown. And we're hopeful bring more projects to the area. And in order to do so, you've got to start somewhere, and I think this is a great start and will be a great asset to your community. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
See no one else. Public portion is now closed. Discussion, councilmembers?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Rogers.
First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Pete. I won't attempt to pronounce his last name, but he called me and he spoke to me about this project. It wasn't, I had heard about the project previously, and just want to let you know that I appreciate you taking the time to give me all the information over the phone. We talked and basically to answer questions that I had and concerns that I had. I understand the comments that we've heard, and I understand the history of the Memorial Auditorium. I mean, there's no question about it. Unfortunately, there are buildings in the city that we just did not preserve. And I'm really excited about this. Very excited about all the green infrastructure that's going to take place and all of the services that will be provided to residents who live there. And so, I would like to move it forward. And so, I will be supporting this legislation. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
I had a question for the MBH representative. You indicated that you would be able to get some state funding for this. Are there requirements about who can be housed in these units?
Yeah, we have applied for an RFP process for a tax credit funding award. It's a governor-sponsored program called Moving Forward. And we applied for that funding and received it. It targets 80% AMI and under, so 80% the adjusted median income based on the county.
The reason I ask is that we had that same, I believe it was a similar grant that we had that displaced the people at Woodlake Village and Parkshire Commons. And so, I'm concerned about, well, then, no one would be displaced here. It would, it would just, it sounds like it would just be this low income.
Mr. President, if I can just speak to that, these are two different programs. The Moving Forward Program, as he said, is 80% AMI of the county. The Concord and Woodlake Village Program was a HUD program that was 60% of, I believe it's the poverty rate. And so, they are totally different. The income for this project is higher. And the other thing that's noticeable is that this is one phase of a three-phase project, and some of those, some portion of that second phase is expected to yield market-rate rents.
There will be no displacement as part of this project. And in fact, the Moving Forward Program is focused on Lake County to alleviate displacement issues that have come with loss of affordable housing. So, this is actually replacing lost affordable housing in the county.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is a very emotional issue, particularly about the location and what have you. But as we look around some of the other communities, like East Chicago, we have the town, East Chicago, Washington, and Hammond, the only way we can move forward sometimes, unfortunately, some of our paths can't stand like we want it to. There are a lot of young people that we talked with throughout these years, and they want to see our city move forward. I want to see it in their light. And I think this is another way to move forward, as big as it may be from a historical standpoint. The other part is if we're going to move forward as a city and provide the housing and provide the businesses and welcome other people either back into the community or move a section of the community. Other projects like this we have to have. And why, you and I know each other, Ms. Brown, and I love you. And I, you know, and I understand how important this is. But if we're going to ever get Gary what we want, this is one of the many steps we have to take. So, I'll be supportive of this. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Let me make sure no one else. Is there anyone else before I go to the second round? Councilwoman Wyatt? Councilwoman Wyatt, you have it.
Thank you. My additional concern, my primary concern is about the historic nature of this site. But my additional concern is, listening to the grant criteria, they talk about, you know, the loss of affordable housing in Lake County. And so, they're going to put affordable housing in Gary. Well, we have affordable housing in Gary. Those other communities may not have affordable housing. And so, it just continues the cycle of having the underpaid living here. Well, we have affordable housing in our city. It's the other cities in Lake County that may have displaced the affordable housing. And I still will vote against it.
Mayor, I have a question for you. You spoke about this as part of a three-phase. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
Actually, I would ask the MBH, and I believe it's two phases. I said three, but it's two phases.
So, can you just speak about the project entirety? What you're going to do?
When we first started to introduce ourselves to staff and economic development, community development teams, there really was a driven need shown for affordable products in your community for the workforce as well as for seniors. So, two, three years ago, we actually applied for two tax credit developments. Neither were funded. One was senior, one was workforce. Unfortunately, just the way the scoring system that the state had set up, Gary, Lake County as a whole, is a little bit disadvantaged to apply for this funding just because of the way this scoring's set up. So, fortunately, they did set up a special program to assist in replacing lost affordable housing in the county. And we were selected, and we were able to deliver some of that to Gary, and that's through this project. With that, though, we had always committed to the city that you can't just go build 38 units in downtown Gary. I think that that's going to change everything. It's a start, but it's just the first of a lot of development and growth that needs to occur to really have an impact downtown. So, we had made the commitment that we will, once we come back, and do a second phase. Our second phase would be additional development on this block along with some scattered site development where we're going out into the neighborhood, the next few blocks off of Broadway and building, single-family, and townhomes that have at least purchasing mechanisms. Then their third phase, the mayor mentioned, would be an additional building similar to this along the corridor that would focus on senior housing. So, it is a multi-phase, multi-step development, goal bringing, generating 100 to 150 total units in the marketplace. And ultimately, hopefully, that wipes its vengeance for attracting other growth in other areas.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you like this?
No. The public portion is closed. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I like the project, and there is a need for more housing inside our city. Affordable house, a market-rate house, and there is a dire need for it. I met a gentleman just recently on his campaign trail, and he was saying how his income is a certain amount, and he wants to live in Gary, but he cannot. And not even because of that, there is no place for him to go when he looked for a house. And he just was saying that he didn't want to live anywhere. There's certain things, he needs new development to happen inside our city. So, I'm looking forward to this coming online. I think it'll be a great addition to the Broadway corridor. We talked about growth. If I take my kids down there, and I don't even remember myself, you know, some of the things that used to take place down there, but it's definitely a history book story for my kids, trying to tell them what that building used to be. And we just cannot go another 10, 20 years with these structures sitting in our city, waiting on something to happen, waiting on the funding to happen. Because our citizens are calling for us to do something and do something now. So, I'll move for a roll call at this time.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
No.
President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is seven yes, one no.
The vote is seven yes, one no. CPO 2019-21 passed on third and final, and so ordered. Before we go to the next one, how soon before you start on this project?
We're hoping for a false start.
False.
The goal is to get it started before the ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
CPO 2019-22 in ordinance, amending Title 15 and Title Land Use, Chapter 123 and Title Zoning Code. Of the code of ordinances of the city of Gary, Indiana. Patricia Frank Alaverty, 637 East Ridge Road, Gary, Indiana. Property at 637 East Ridge Road, Gary, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Smith?
I move for passage of CPO 2019-22 on third and final reading.
Second.
Second, my Councilwoman Caldwell. overview at this time.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And members of the council, this is a project that will allow for the creation of a used car lot on Ridge Road. Built into this project is the opportunity to do landscaping. There are certain stipulations that have been placed upon the developer, by the members of the council, which should give us an opportunity to ensure that the development is consistent with the way that we want the corridor, the Ridge Road corridor, to appear. Certain requirements include landscaping, lighting, fencing, proper signage, and 73 notices were mailed to neighbors within 400 feet of the property. 12 were undeliverable, eight were opposed, and one was not opposed.
Any questions, councilmembers?
I think we had a committee here, and we had some questions in the committee here. Can we have, is the owner here?
Is the owner present at this time?
Yeah. If you have any more questions, questions.
Any questions, councilmember?
Updated on the improvements that you made since the last meeting? Do you have any updates?
Actually, we've been having to do a stomp, landscaping, fencing, and lighting. Everything is working. The commission on the inside plumbing, lefty, and everything. It used to be a good, just need cleaning up. And we already purchased all the fence. We are waiting for the crew, and we hired the contractor to install the fence and landscaping, grasses.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions, councilmembers? Councilwoman?
What were the requirements that we wanted him to?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. We couldn't hear down here.
She's coming to the microphone now.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I want to talk.
Good.
So, the requirements that we put on this ordinance say that in order for Mr. Alaverty or anyone who wants to get a general business license at this location to operate a used car lot, so that would include him, anybody in the future who wants to, any questions here? Would have to have a landscape plan, fencing plan, and signage and lighting plan that is approved by the planning department before he can receive a general business license. So, essentially, he has to bring forth a landscaping plan that's approved before he can start business.
Any other questions, councilmembers?
No. I had some comments at the committee meeting. My concern was that these used car lots, we have to, there has to be some stipulations placed on them because so many of them are looking so junky, you know? And then I saw in the city. So, my concern is that whatever it is that we do with these used car lots, that we place some stipulations, that there are some requirements that they have to meet in order to, some standards, in order to make sure that the used car lot is, the appearance is kept up. And I believe that there were some stipulations that were placed. Yes.
One year. I think it was one year. I checked with our attorney. Excuse me.
You're correct, Councilwoman Brown. There was a one-year stipulation as to the eyesore issue. That simply could be handled by code enforcement and the enforcement of our current codes. But there was a one-year stipulation on this variance.
So, does the one-year give them enough time to get the business working going and everything?
Yes. If you recall, originally, it was asked to be six months, and I made the recommendation that we give them a year to establish that.
Mr. Chairman, that would be for every business moving forward as well?
It would be done on a case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case? Okay. All right.
Thank you all. At this time, we'll open up the public portion. Anyone who has spoken, Dean, CPO 2019-22, you have three minutes to speak on this ordinance.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jim Nowacki. I live in the 2nd District. I don't have objections to used car lots. I have objections to the way the council passes this without knowing what you're passing. To say that you're going to pass it, and then later, we're going to get a plan, and then we're going to look at it again in a year. That's crazy. The time to pass this is after. You've got a complete detailed plan for the site. For instance, I was at the committee meeting, and I think some of the council people were there too. And he says, we're going to have maybe 20 cars at the site. So, you turn to his rendering that he's got, and then he submits with his application, and it's the application of the ordinance you're passing today, and you count 44 car spaces. So, you say if you're, is it the, and you see he's got some checkmarks and stuff, he's got a little fluffy things that I guess represent some sort of landscaping with no details. And then the council is going to count on coming back. You know, the council could make a reasonable landscaping ordinance for all parking lots. This parking lot, used car lots, take a look at the lots that the city owns. How about the one at the 504 billion where cars drive right across the sidewalk to get onto Broadway? Right across the sidewalk. There's no landscaping, no barrier. Let's look at the parking lots you've got up and down 5th Avenue that are, that serve for the baseball stadium. You can see the conditions therein. Let's look at all of the parking lots the city operates, and you see that without an ordinance, how can you expect businesspeople to a higher standard than the council at a minimum as for their own problems? In this instance, without, I have no objection to a parking lot, but with the detail, if there's no detailed plan, if he doesn't know how many cars he's putting in it, if he doesn't have any other important points that are going to be part of the ordinance, then the council's really not doing your job. It's not just, oh, here's a business, let's get the business in here. It's supposed to be also to make sure that it complies with minimum standards for the community, not your minimum standards. Your minimum standards are low. The minimum standards that we have in the community.
There's a way to talk to people.
It's a little bit higher than the minimum standards you have. You obviously accept anything, any sort of garbage, any sort of pollution, any sort of...
Thank you, Mr. Nowacki. Your time is now up.
Thank you.
See no one else. Public portion is now closed. Any further discussion, councilmembers? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
No.
Councilwoman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
No.
President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is six yes, two no's.
With a vote of six yes, two no's, CPO 2019-22 passed on third and final and so ordered.
CPO 2019-23, an ordinance establishing opioids as a nuisance and sanctioning cost recovery, sponsored by Mayor Karen from Wilson City of Gary.
Mr. President, I move for passage of CPO 2019-23 on third and final reading.
Second?
Second, my Councilwoman Caldwell. Overdue at this time.
Mr. Chairman and members, Mr. President and members of the council, you may recall that on April 19, 2018, the city of Gary filed a lawsuit against the manufacturers and distributor, distributors of opioids. It, the theory of the lawsuit is that these manufacturers and distributors have really contributed to the addiction, the opioid addiction in our city and in other communities, and it has created serious sufferings in this community. It also alleges that manufacturers and distributors have falsely and negligently marketed these pain medications, claiming them to be safe and non-addicted. Of course, we know with the awarding of a judgment under one of the first national lawsuits that that is far from the case. This ordinance declares the sale of opioids as a public nuisance. It also gives the city a cost recovery tool that allows the city to recover the city's costs related to opioid addiction, particularly overdose, the incarceration of addicts, and the cost of processing addicts through the court system. It also talks about the cost of maintaining drug treatment facilities, ambulance response, and other things that are related to the public safety aspect of responding to what we now know is a national problem. It will also give the city the authority to set up a drug fund to pay for drug education through hospitals, drug clinics, schools, churches, and it will provide a fund to which distributors can pay restitution to the city for the costs related to addiction. It would also be a funding mechanism, a continued funding mechanism for our drug treatment
Any questions, any council members? This time, set aside public portion. You have three minutes to speak on CPO 2019-23.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jim Wackey. I live in the second district, and I'm never surprised when the council struggles, strains, looks high over every hill, down every valley, to find, find a problem and a solution to that problem that is really the wrong, and the wrong way around. Some of the council members know that, that I've long felt that legalizing the use of medical marijuana in our state would alleviate many of the problems we have with opioid addictions, because, and that's not just my opinion, that's also the opinion of many medical experts. Many medical experts recognize that the harmless effects of cannabis in, in the use of, in the use of many, many health problems, some of them directly correspond with the reasons that the abuse of opioids. So, while it's great that you're going to hire a high-priced New York attorney to pursue the case, and of course you're saying you're going to recover all these costs, et cetera, it almost seems as if you're rubbing your hands in anticipation of getting that money, getting that money out the back of people, unfortunate people who are suffering, suffering not only because of the opioid addiction, but also suffering because these backward states and the, some of our, some of our local leaders who refuse to take a strong stand on the issue, allow marijuana to be, marijuana, I call it marijuana, or you call it cannabis, to remain, medical use of cannabis to remain illegal. You guys could do something about it. Instead, you're chasing this, anticipating you're going to get a big payoff. And I think that's, I think it's really kind of sad to try to make money off of other people's misery when we have a simple solution, an easy solution, that would, if not eliminate the problem, would take up some giant steps to decreasing it. So, I guess, you know, I guess if you're going to go, you know, look for the money, that's, maybe this is, maybe this, maybe you can anticipate winning this lawsuit, collecting these funds, but you know what you're still going to have? You're still going to have sick people.
Thank you, Mr. Wackey. Seeing no one else, public portion is now closed. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2019-23 passed on third and final and so ordered.
CPO 2019-24, an ordinance revising the 2019 appropriations for the general salary and operating budgets for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, ending December 31, 2019, sponsored by Mayor Karen from Wilson City of Gary, Angel Hayes City Control.
Mr. President, I move for passage, CPO 2019-24 on third and final reading.
Second?
Any more publicly second? Overdue at this time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this ordinance allows for two modifications to the city budget. The first is that the prior individual who was a member, or who was the corporation counsel, was a contractual, was a contractor. This makes the current corporation counsel an employee, so it changes the law department and arranges for the budget, or the budget amendment includes salary and the applicable fringe benefits. It does not change that salary, it just makes it a part of the salary. In the fire department, there's a job description for business manager that was changed to remove a duty from a prior job description, and the budget amendment reduces the business manager's salary by $4,000, increases the- They, on, we removed that director of planning, but what we found over the course of time is because of so many of the requirements that are connected to the development, whether it's road development, whether it is our work with the local tracks program, or our work with a variety of other grant and/or entitlement programs, we really do have to have a full-blown director of planning. This would result in a change in salary from $51,000 to $67,000. It would also eliminate the director of zoning, giving Sarah the responsibility, or the planner, I should say, whoever it is, the responsibility for the zoning work. And in fact, you've heard her over the course of probably the last six to eight months, do a lot of that work, and this would result in a reduction of $23,000 in the overall departmental budget. So there would be a cost savings associated with this.
Any question, council members? At this time, public portion now set aside for anyone who would like to speak on CPO 2019-24. You have three minutes to speak on this ordinance.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jim Wackey. I live in the second district. And when the city made the change to eliminate the city planner position, everyone recognized that was a mistake. Because later, the council's getting around to addressing it, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to have a city planner in a city as large and as important as the city of Gary. I'd rather find any other community that doesn't have a planner, except our city. And it's also wise to combine the two positions. There's not enough work to have a full-time zoning administrator in the city of Gary. There's just really not that much, not many, not many projects that come through, and I can almost, I can't imagine what they do to fill their day at a desk with almost no projects. So, I think it's a great idea to, to establish a planner for the city of Gary. It's, builds a, a need that, that many are confused as to why we eliminated the position and combining the other two positions makes good sense. We always like to see any, some economies in the budget, so I'm going to urge the, and the other two parts of the ordinance also makes some good sense. I'm urging the council to support it. And let's get the, the initiatives you're taking.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, public portion is now closed. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2019-24 passed on third and final and so ordered.
CPO 2019-25, an amendment to the Gary Civil Rights Ordinance, 8967, sponsored by Councilwoman Rebecca Wyatt, Councilwoman First District.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Ways and Means has before you, CPO 2019-25, move for passage on the final reading? Third and final reading?
Still second?
Second.
Second, my Councilwoman Smith. Overdue at this time. Councilwoman Wyatt, if I sponsor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. There was some, this is an ordinance that would amend the current Gary Civil Rights Ordinance to include as protected classes, sexual orientation and gender identity. It also, we had talked in committee about deleting the references to crude color and ancestry. However, I understood at committee that the Human Relations Director believed that we should reinstate the words ancestry and color into the ordinance, and I don't know, I expected that it would be amended by substitution to make that correction.
You want to amend it on the floor to make the correction?
May I call the attorney, city attorney Paul? He did assist me on this.
Councilwoman, I don't have it in front of me, but they said there's amended version already in the packet? I don't have amended version.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-one.
Twenty-five.
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 It's twenty-five right here. You don't have one?
I don't have one. Thank you.
Mr. President, council members, it should be, it should be-
Thank you.
2019-25, and it has amended, made 2019.
Okay, I think I did see that in the other packet. Right.
Paul June.
Right, okay. Okay, got it. Yeah, I see it. Okay, so we probably need a motion to substitute by amendment to put the language about ancestry, color, and what was the other one?
Just those two.
Those two.
Increase.
Increase, okay. So, what we talked about at committee was deleting the references to ancestry and color. And as I stated previously, the Director of Human Relations believed that those two categories should remain in the ordinance. So the amendment would just be adding ancestry and color, sexual orientation, gender identity, and cleaning up some language that was in there that referred to disabled persons as handicapped.
Is that the amendment that you're making?
That, yes. That the amendment is to add ancestry and color back into the Gary Civil Rights Ordinance.
So the amendment by substitution.
Correct.
Need a second?
Second.
Then, second, roll call, Madam Clerk on the amendment.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2019-25 has been amended and so ordered. Is there any more with your overview at this time?
Just to point out that this updating the Gary Civil Rights Ordinance to include sexual orientation and gender identity would bring the city of Gary in line with other communities in Indiana. The Director of Human Relations Commission provided me with a list of the cities in Indiana that already include these as protected classes, and they're, you know, Valparaiso, West Lafayette, Terre Haute, South Bend, New Albany, Muncie, Lake County. The county ordinance has sexual orientation, but not gender identity. So it would be a move forward for the city of Gary. It would show that, it would show that the city recognizes and protects all of its citizens and residents and people in the city. And I also believe that it would be good for the economic development of the city, because that would show, with the passage of this, it will show that the city is welcoming to all people. And I had asked for a resolution to make sure that all of the council meetings were accessible to the disabled, and as everyone knows, we have the Americans with Disabilities, that with those, with these amendments, and I believe that, that the city would be open to business and welcoming. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Any comments or questions, council members at this time? At this time, public portion is now open. Anyone who would like to speak for Dean, CPO 2019-25, you have three minutes to speak on this ordinance.
Good evening, Councilwoman, President.
Good evening.
I, I am in support of this amendment, and I feel, feel it will be very beneficial to the city, and it will show that the city is very welcoming, as Councilwoman Wyatt has said. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, public portion is now closed. There is no further discussion from council members. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Proto?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Yes.
And President Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2019-25 passed on third and final and so ordered.
Mr. President, it's been one minute. This president's pending ordinances and resolutions on third and final.
Councilman's ordinance resolution on second reading. Almost there.
CPO 2019 dash 26, an ordinance by the Gary Common Council to reduce the minimum applicant age to become firefighter from 21 to 18, sponsored by Ron Buer, City of Gary Common Council.
Mr. President, I move for passage of CPO 2019-26 on second reading. Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday, May 14th, at 5:30 PM, and a public hearing on May 21st.
Second.
The room probably second. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proto.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Yes.
And President Brewer.
Yes.
This president's vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2019-26 is moving to the Finance Committee, estimated the 14th at 5:30 PM, and a public hearing made of 21st at 6:00 PM.
Mr. President, do you want us to do the rest of the Finance Committee meeting altogether?
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown.
CPO 2019 dash 28, an ordinance establishing additional appropriations for Fund 261-5538, Section 108, interest and fund, 261-5543, land acquisition, sponsored by Mayor Karen Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller, and Community Development Department. CPO 2019 dash 29, an ordinance approving a transfer of funds between Fund 261-5565, Housing Repair Program, and Fund 261-522, Senior Repair Program, sponsored by Mayor Karen Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller and Community Development Department. CPO 2019 dash 32, an ordinance renaming Fund 445 to the City Building Renovation Fund and Establish 2019 Budget for the Renovation of the City Buildings, sponsored by Mayor Karen Wilson, City of Gary, Angela Hayes, City Controller.
Mr. President, I move for passage of CPO 2019-28, 29, and 32, on second reading. Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday, May 14th, at 5:30 PM, and a public hearing on May 21st.
Second.
Room probably second. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proto.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Yes.
And President Brewer.
Yes.
This president's vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2019-28, 29, and 32 is moving to the Finance Committee, May the 14th, 2019, at 5:30 PM, and a public hearing made of 21st at 6:00 PM.
CPO 2019 dash 30, an ordinance amending Title 15 and Title Land Usage, Chapter 123 and Title Zoning Code, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Gary, Indiana, Petition, Slum near Zero, 620 Juniper Lane, Lake in the Hills, Illinois, property at 624 Broadway, Gary, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Let me have a loop up them together. Yeah, okay, yeah.
CPO 2019 dash 31, an ordinance amending Title 15 and Title Land Usage, Chapter 123 and Title Zoning Code, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Gary, Indiana, Petition, Mark Romano, 7600 Locust Avenue, Gary, Indiana, property at 925 North Shelby Street, Gary, Indiana.
Okay, Mr. President, I move for passage of CPO 2019-30 and 31, on second reading, with the hearing, public hearing, planning hearing date, 5/14 at 5:00 PM, and a public hearing on May 21st at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proto.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt. Abstain of a conflict of interest. And President Brewer.
Yes.
This president's vote is seven yes, one abstention.
Seven yes, one abstention. CPO 2019-30 and 31 is moving to the Planning Committee, May the 14th at 5:15 PM, and a public hearing, May the 21st at 6:00 PM.
This president's pending ordinances and resolutions on second reading.
Thank you. Special, my special slide, I'll turn it over to the mayor at this time. The mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, let me add my congratulations to our Democratic Mayor nominee, Jerome Prince, as well as the other candidates in yesterday's primaries, those who were successful and those who were not successful. It has been a humbling experience to serve the citizens of this community, and I am certainly grateful to have provided service over these last seven and a half, what will ultimately be eight years. And, and it really does speak to a 30-year tenure in public service. So I'm very grateful. Thank you for your earlier comments. I'm very appreciative. And please know that I will continue working, and I'm going to run through the tape. But I, I just wanted to thank you for all of your expressions, as well as to the members of the public, both here and throughout the community, who have sent calls, who have sent text messages. And I just want you all to know how much I appreciate you. I want to also congratulate our First District Democratic Councilmember nominee, William Godwin. I want to congratulate the Second District Council nominee, Cozy Witherspoon, our Fourth District Council nominee, Ty Atkins, and Sixth District Council nominee, Dwight Williams, for being newly nominated to the council. I want to congratulate our colleagues who are, as well as Democratic Council, Large nominee, Claudius Leg. I want to congratulate those who are being re-elected or renominated, Councilwoman Mary Brown, Councilwoman Amanda Barnes Caldwell, Council President Ron Brewer, and Councilman Mike Brown, on your nomination. I want to also say to Councilwoman Rogers, Councilman Smith, and Councilman, Councilwoman Wyatt, as well as Councilman Proto, my councilman, that it has been a delight to work with you, and I look forward to continuing to work with you through the end of the year. I want to offer my condolences to families of fire victims. There were two deaths. The victims as yet are unidentified at 1153 Connecticut Street today. I'm sorry, they are still being identified. And also, Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell intimated earlier to the family of Herman Kendrick, a longtime businessman in this community, operating Herman's Body Shop at 21st and Broadway, on his death in a fire earlier, or last week, late last week. I want to add my condolences to the family and friends of Councilwoman Elsie Franklin, who was a longtime county councilperson, but also the Chair of the Gary Precinct Organization, as well as the Vice Chair of the Lake County Democratic Party and Director of General Services under Mayor Thomas Barnes. For those who have served in the political arena, particularly in elected politics, she was a godmother of sorts in not only serving, but getting the vote out on Election Day. And we wanted to certainly send our condolences to her children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews, and her sister and brother in her passing. The family of Loretta Millet, who passed on April 16th. The family of Landis Maybone, who was the National President of the Sin City Disciples, who was funeralized on April 27th. And I want to also congratulate members of the Gary Police Department, close, Police Officer Agnes Roberts, on her retirement. And I happened to run into her a couple of days ago, and actually yesterday, and asked her how she was enjoying her retirement, and she said that she is enjoying it fine, but she still misses the department already. So that's noteworthy and so consistent with how Officer Roberts served. I want to indicate that we have two officers to graduate from the academy of here, first Officer Blant Taxler and Officer Jason McCoy. And I would note that Officer McCoy is the younger brother of Officer Anthony Browware. So that is a great thing, I think, for our city. I want to announce, and many of you may have seen it in today's media, that Governor Holcomb signed the casino bill today. He also signed a bill that is contemplated to reduce infant mortality. He actually signed the latter bill up here today. And I was honored to attend that bill signing, and, and excited about the prospect for the bill that's contemplated to reduce infant mortality. We are excited about the casino bill, and you'll all hear more about the next steps with our current casino owner and operator. There were Green Day activities throughout the city. We have Bright Buster Day on April 27th, and just want to commend Rashawn Brooks and the entire team, particularly those who were engaged in that, both Police, Fire, General Services, GST, Code Enforcement, so many other departments in the city. And we got it in before the rain started. And that was pretty significant. But we had a large number of volunteers, and for them, we are grateful. But it wasn't just on the 27th. We had a group, the MCC, had a group out on May 4th, as did Beyond Four Walls. And then there was one other faith community that was actively engaged, I'm sorry, St. Timothy Community Church, along with Comcast Cares. Not only prepared the ground for community garden that would be free to anyone, but they also fed people at, in, in the church. So that was a significant event on the 4th. We had Household Hazardous Waste Day on April 27th, and of course, on the 27th, Donna Brazil was here with Indiana Black Expo, their state conference, as a keynote speaker. And she was excellent. Also on April 27th, Mr. Art Hoyle was honored with a key to the city, longtime jazz musician at St. Timothy Community Church. We held a Contractors Roundtable on April 25th that focused on how to do business with the U.S. Omnicore of Engineers at the Gary Sanitary District, and I want to commend Tammy Davis for pulling that together. I think it was very enlightening. And then on May 3rd, we had the Business to Business Minority Showcase at the Majestic State, Majestic Event Center. And I can say from my observations, on that day, there were a number of local businesses that made a connection with the folks from Majestic. There will be on May 10th, right here in Art House, an Indiana Small Business Workshop from 1 to 4, and it will allow people to understand the process for small business certifications. We also started the current class of the Gary Micro Business Enterprise on Monday, May 6th. And I'm pleased to announce, because many of you know the connection with the GMI class and the eligibility for the first financial loans in the city partnership, Jocelyn Kelly of Jay's Breakfast Club was approved for the first small business loan through that program. So we're excited about that. The city's next webinar is Thursday, May 16th. It will provide an overview of the city's comprehensive plan, and there will be a webinar hosted each month through August. The public can participate in the meeting from their electronic devices using the Go to Meeting app. And from your smartphone, the number is 1-866-899-4679. I want to add my thanks and congratulations to, or my welcome back to Councilman Proto. I had an opportunity to visit with him, but it's nothing like being back in the saddle. So I just want to congratulate him on that. That completes my presentation, Mr. President, other than to say that Midwest is actively working on both traffic lights and some of the out, the streetlights that are out.
Is there any question for the mayor, or any council members?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
At this time, public portion is now open.
Horses and Commissions have the opening for the Gary Public Transportation Board. It's the Democratic position. So if you're interested, please submit your letter of interest and resume to the Gary Common Council, here, Councilwoman Amanda Barnes Caldwell. Or 01 Broadway, Suite 03. And also, I would like to wish all the women in the city of Gary a Happy Mother's Day.
Before we go to public portion, I have a scheduling conflict for our next council meeting. So I would ask if we can reschedule the council meeting to May the 16th at 6:00 PM? That's a Thursday. Yes.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Rogers.
I move that our next city council meeting be scheduled for Thursday, May 16th, 2019, at 6 o'clock PM.
And I kind of like this location where we sit, so I'll just ask that you probably be back here at our finance meeting also, too. If the room probably second, we'll be back here at Art House. If you have the room in probably second, the move the regular scheduled council meeting from the 21st to May 16th at 6:00 PM, right here at Art House. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Proto. Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Yes.
And President Brewer.
Yes.
This president, the vote is eight to zero.
Vote of eight to zero. The next council meeting will be here at Art House at 6:00 PM on the 16th of May. We have a few speakers tonight. I think a lot of people just signed in because they seen a sheet out there. Ms. Ann Walker. And I have a Mary Bobo. Mr. John Allen, you're the third one. Ms. Blackwell still here? And Ms. Nowacki? Did I, did I miss anyone calling anyone's name to speak? I have you coming back to Ms. Nowacki.
There's a woman back at the.
Right after her. You're right after her.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening, council members. One thing I want to say, my sister and myself, we receive cards to wear for which to vote. And I just don't believe that they only sent me and my sister a card. I believe everybody got a card, they just don't pay attention to it. And secondly, our community out in Tarrytown on the eleventh, we were having to clean up, we got a dumpster where you can bring your tires, TVs, whatever, bring your equipment in that dumpster. They was telling me anybody can bring things. So, that'll help the city, I guess. But that's all I had to say. You all have a good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michelle Crowder. I'm sorry, can y'all hear me now? My name is Michelle Crowder. Good evening. First of all, I want to congratulate everyone.
Thank you.
On your actions. I really want Gary to be great again. Door two down is Triple T's Top Notch Homemade Sandwiches, which I manage, and a lot of you all have been there. So, I just want to keep making Gary great. And that's it.
Thank you.
So...
Thank you so much for your service that you continue to run into this great community.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Allen. I just wanted to ask to Mayor Freeman for her service here in Gary, and I want her to know that I sent her some words that were very sincere, and that anything that I did that was of harm is from myself, anything that I did to benefit, it was under the influence of all the efforts she made as the mayor here. And I benefited from many programs here. And I believe in giving credit where credit due. I complain a lot, and on occasion, I've complained publicly, so I need to be thankful publicly as well. Because in most cases, we articulate our grievances as if the good don't outweigh the bad, and that's not always the case. And in this case, the bad is nowhere near the good. And I plan to take the benefits that I did get, and use them in the best way to help the city as I can. And no matter what side of fence I'm on, argument, I'm always a team player, and I'm here.
Thank you. You.
Thank you.
I'm going to allow you to speak.
Good evening, again. On behalf of serving as a citizen in Gary, Indiana, on a commission, and I am very honored to serve on that commission. It took us a little while to learn our responsibility and job, but we're proud to be there, and now that we are abreast as to what our duties are as far as serving, we plan on serving it to the best of our ability. I think I'm well qualified to be there because I have been a genealogist for some time. I've also been a historian. I've also been a scientist, many different accolades going on my history as far as Gary, Indiana. But I'd also like to say that whatever we're asking the council to help us with as far as preserving, it is because we done our homework, and we feel we got a lot of land in Gary. And we have a lot of different landmarks that we need to preserve in order to hold onto Gary's history. We have no intentions of letting our history be wiped out because somebody thinks that the building shouldn't be there, or it's been there too long. I'd like to just say that not only is there buildings, but you would be surprised when we bring up the individuals, whether they're old or dead or whatever, there's still people that have served here in Gary, Indiana, and we're going to try and maintain, and hopefully make you abreast as to the knowledge that we are finding out. Hopefully, we will find sources to share this information with you. I do apologize because I've been on that commission for two and a half years. Naomi Melander has also served on the commission with us, and we congratulated her long before she left because it was a difficult decision to serve on that commission. But it's okay because the people that are sitting there are doing what they have to do in order to get the job done. So, we don't see you coming against us. We see you as not being knowledgeable as to the history that we are trying to preserve in Gary. Thank you so much. We got a lot of land in Gary. We don't need to take our monuments and tear them down.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Newackey, be our last speaker for the night.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Terry Wood. I'm not a politician or anything. I want to congratulate everyone again. About a year ago, I went to the mayor's office, and I had a deal with her. A little background about myself, I am an environmental engineer, and I work here in Gary. But working here in Gary is not a lot of people in Gary making money here in Gary. I knocked on the mayor's door. I got some training stuff, and I want to just, wanted to, my way to help them, I can train them. And because I'm a disenfranchised person, disenfranchised woman in all the city that really deals got a part, it's not a lot of representation, but it's a lot of good paying jobs right here in the city of Gary that we don't even know about. And I have the tools and expertise to train them. And to train people that's coming out of drug courts, information to give you good paying jobs, and I just wanted to put that in front of you guys here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President. I'm from the council. My name's Jim Newackey. I live in the Second District, and I've been in the city now about twenty-one years. I know that when I came to the city under the King administration, there had been the request, one of the things that Mayor King was interested in was a forensic audit of the books when he took office from his predecessor. We know that after Mayor King, Mayor Rudy Clay came to office, and one of the first things he said was, "We want a forensic audit of the books of the city of Gary." I know that when Mayor King, or Mayor Clay was replaced by Mayor Freeman Wilson, she and her plan for the city also said, "We need a forensic audit, know where our finances are." In this election, yesterday, one of the big promises made by the Democratic nominee for mayor was, "We're going to have a forensic audit of the books." Now, we're now in, we're now early in the year, in May, pretty soon it's going to be June, then it's going to be July, we're going to get into the budget season. And year after year, the budget season is way at the end of the process, the council takes way at the end of the budget season to start the budget. And so, I'm going to urge the council to make two changes in the normal business. One is to get on that budget a little earlier, so we don't have to have all the changes that we see in the budget throughout the year. Let's get in that budget process a little earlier. Let's spend more time, make sure we've got a solid budget. Last time, we passed a budget, and the administration says, "Well, we're just passing this, but we're going to come back with a budget later." That's not the way to do it. And the second thing we need to do is, this council, before you leave office, and in the budget process that you're coming into now, you're going to have to allocate enough money for a forensic audit of the city's books. You're going to have to, I don't know what that amount is, and you're probably going to find someone who can give you that number. I would assume it might be several hundred thousand dollars. But it's absolutely imperative that the city have an authentic, qualified, independent source do a forensic analysis of the books, so we don't have to wonder where the money is, we don't have to wonder what happened to it, we'll know where.
Thank you, Ms. Newackey. Let me thank everyone for coming out, and thank everyone for participating in the election on yesterday. We really appreciate all that you continue to do for our city, and working on anything we put forward. At this time, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
We now adjourn. Have a good...